Good evening. I'll call to order a meeting of the Licensing Board of the City of West Bend. It's January 6th. We recognize a quorum of our Licensing Board here tonight. Our first item of business is approval of the Licensing Board regular meeting minutes from December 16th.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you, Alderman Zingshaim and Alderman Butchlick. Any comments, questions, corrections? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. First action item tonight is a deck bar, deck bar amusement device. Clerk, I assume all the paperwork's been submitted and in good order for this?
It has. No issues.
Same for the next one, too?
Correct.
Great, thank you. I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you, Alderman Butchlick and Zingshaim. Any comments, questions, discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Our last item of business is premier gold, silver, and coin secondhand article and jewelry dealer license application.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you, Zingshaim and Butchlick. Any comments, questions? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Our meeting's adjourned. The public works tonight.
All right. I call the meeting, I call the order meeting of the Finance Committee. We have four agenda items this evening. The first is approval of minutes from our regular meeting on December 16th. I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Thank you, Alderman Allen and...
Alderman Sizer.
Alderman Sizer. Thank you very much. Any corrections, additions, deletions? Otherwise, all in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Second item is 2025-2027 Collective Bargaining Agreement between the City of West Bend and the West Bend Police Protective Association. I can speak to that one. Prior to the end of the new, or end of 2024, we did reach an agreement with the West Bend Police Protective Association. Very close to in line with our other major unions in public safety. Wage increases for each of the three years of the contract. There was some revised language over time, shift change by seniority, other things to clean up that language, things that Chief had brought forward. By and large, I'm very, very pleased with where we netted out on this contract. It is a three-year contract, similar to the other, the fire, or excuse me, firefighters as well as the police supervisors. We did have a small correction at the front end, similar to what we'd also done with our nonrepresented employees at the city to ensure that their salaries are consistent with being at or above, slightly above the median. Again, like our other unions, not anything that they are going to be the top paid, but they're far from being the bottom paid when you look at surrounding communities and comparables. So, very pleased with the result of that. I'll entertain a motion to approve that contract.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you, Men Alderman Allen and Alderman Berquist. We have a motion and a second. Are there any questions regarding that contract? There being none, all in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. The next item on our agenda is a resolution authorizing appropriations for 18th Avenue Paradise to Vote. Special Assessments revenues. Max is coming to the stand. Good evening, Max.
Good evening. Thank you. This item is to authorize appropriation for assessment revenue that will come from property owners along the 18th Avenue project. This is similar to the resolution that we passed four, five years ago for the previous phase of the project. That resolution specified the limits of the project from vote to decorum. And in order to be able to receive the funds for the second phase of the project from Paradise to Vote, the Finance Department needs to have this resolution from the council to authorize the funds to come into the same account. That's why this document is in front of you tonight.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you, Alderman Allen and Alderman Butchlick. Any questions for Max? All those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Thank you. Thank you very much, Max. The final item we have on our agenda this evening is a resolution authorizing the appropriation of funds for the purchase of an ambulance. Good evening, Chief.
Good evening. Thank you. Tonight before you, it's a resolution to consider allocating funds for the purchase of a used ambulance unit from the Kewaskom Fire Department. Just some background on this. We currently have four ambulances in operation right now. It's pretty commonplace to have three of them tied up on calls at one point in time. And it doesn't give us a whole lot of wiggle room as far as if one's down for maintenance or damage or otherwise unavailable. And several times over the last couple of years, we've actually had all four units out. And at least two times I can think of, we've had all four units out and had an additional call where we had to call for a mutual aid ambulance. I know the last time we had the person on the call, we just didn't have a vehicle to send them in. So, with the consolidation of EMS services with the Village of Kewaskom, the Kewaskom Fire Department Ambulance District, we thought it was the increase of another 500 calls a year to consider having another ambulance in the fleet. When we did that, when we made that decision, we started looking at our options. Option number one would be to buy a new ambulance right away. New ambulances, the quotes we have from our vendors, a new ambulance in July would have been just shy of $400,000 and with about a $1,500 a month. So, we anticipate a new ambulance now would be just over four. That ambulance would not come with a fair amount of equipment we would need to add in addition. So, we looked at that option altogether, probably closer to $500,000 to buy a new unit and new equipment. Option number two is to look at the ambulance in Kewaskom. We thought that was a fortunate opportunity to look at that ambulance because it's laid out almost as identical to our unit. So, operationally, that makes a big difference when we have people jumping from a rig or jumping in an ambulance coming from off duty. They don't have to think about where the equipment might be located in the ambulance. In addition, that used ambulance is a 2021, I'm sorry, I think it's a 2020 chassis delivered in 2021. It had about 40,000 miles on it. It's got a diesel motor and it's a four-wheel drive. Buying this ambulance would give us our second four-wheel drive ambulance in service. I think there's some obvious benefits to that, given our climate. Good? Sorry. So, the addition of a second four-wheel drive ambulance, operationally, make a lot of sense force as well. In addition to the ambulance, it's in remarkable condition. They've taken very good care of it. It recently had all this recent preventative maintenance done and front two tires replaced just because of age. So, it's in really good shape. We enlisted... Drawn a blank right now. Reliant, sorry. Reliant to come up and take a look at it and give us opinion on if it was mechanically sound or not. And it is. So, when we come to work, I worked very closely with the city administrator. Obviously, Kewaskom Fire Department negotiating, you know, what would be a fair price for that ambulance. The first thing we did was we looked on the used market for what other ambulances in similar aging condition would be available. We didn't find a lot, to be honest with you. We found a couple, and literally like two or three. They were in the area of 200, about $190,000 to $250,000. But each one of those ambulances had differences that make it difficult to compare apples to apples. Gas versus diesel motors, two-wheel drive versus four-wheel drive, such for, so forth. So, when we looked at all that and then considered the equipment we have to put on it, we negotiated a price of $300,000 with the Kewaskom Fire Department. Given the cost of a new unit, the cost of a used unit even, with the additional equipment on it, we believe that that's a fair price for that unit and it's operationally in good condition. And we could get another eight to 10 years of service out of it.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you, Alderman Allen and Alderman Berquist. Any questions? I'm sorry, Butchlick.
It's all right. I've been called worse.
No, you haven't.
Any questions for Chief on this? Go ahead, Alderman Schmidt.
So, Les, how, how many units do we have altogether now with this one?
We have four. This will make five units.
Okay, that's what I thought I heard.
Alderman Zingshaim?
Just to clarify, for, we've, I've gotten a lot of correspondence on this for whatever the reason. The fact that we're buying this unit off of Kewaskom is just purely coincidence. It has nothing to do with the fact that we are entering into an agreement to mutually aid and mutually service them. That's totally a separate issue than the fact that we're going to buy one of their used ambulances.
Except for aside the fact they don't longer need the ambulance.
Well, yeah. Okay.
That's the only connection, is it's just available. And I do believe whether by happenstance, a few of the local ambulance services do buy very similar configured units than us.
Any additional questions? I'll just make the comment, Chief. I really appreciate the work that you and your team did in due diligence in seeking out what is, what appears to be an excellent value for taxpayers of this community and looking to meet the needs of not only our community, but the surrounding communities that you and your team serve. So, I really, really appreciate the work that you guys put in on that. Alderman Sparts.
Yeah, I had some experience specing lifeline ambulances in the past and the costs are right in. If the new ones are $400,000, you're going to be adding about $60,000 in equipment on top of it. And that was four years ago. So, this price is, yep, expected. So, right in the ballpark.
Thank you very much. There being no further questions, all those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much, Chief.
Thank you.
With there being no further business before the Finance Committee, I adjourn as chair.
I'll call to order a meeting of the Common Council of the City of West Bend. More than 24 hours in advance of this meeting, notice of the time. Place, date, and subject matter of the meeting was posted in accordance to Wisconsin state statutes. Clerk, can you confirm this meeting was properly posted?
Yes, it was.
Thank you. I invite you to join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We recognize a full quorum of our common council here tonight. Our first item of business is approval of the regular meeting common council minutes from December 16th, 2024.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you, Butchlick and Allen. Any comments, questions, corrections? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We'll move on to our consent agenda tonight, items two through six. Aaron, I know you had a constituent reach out and ask the question if a capital purchase can be approved in a consent agenda. And I don't know the answer to that. It's kind of a unique question, but I... Maybe Ian, if you can make sure that we're doing, doing this correctly tonight?
I, I mean, is it, it's not a, it's not changing the budget, correct?
No, it's not. It's using funds, funds that are made available from a sale of another.
Correct.
Correct. If it's, if it's changing the budget, there's a specific procedure. But if it's not a change to the budget, then it's not an issue.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion on the consent agenda.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you, Allen and Schmidt. Any comments, questions, discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Our action items tonight, item number seven, additional election inspector appointments for 2024-2025 election period. Those names are listed in your packet. Clerk, any comments on this?
No, no comments. We just have additional residents who would like to join our team. And we need to bring that to council before each election in order to approve those.
Great, thank you. I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you, Zingshaim and Alderman Allen. Any comments, questions, discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Our next item is a resolution canceling certain town of West Bend special assessments for the reconstruction of 18th Avenue between Paradise and Vote Drive.
You're taking that. Great, thanks, Ian.
Yep.
So, as we discussed when those special assessments were, when we had the public hearings on the special assessments, the town properties were not being assessed today. Like, they are not, they were not billed for any of the work that was done. We have to include them in the calculations, otherwise it's not an equitable calculation for the, you know, property owners there. We can't just ignore half the road essentially. So, we have to include them in that. There was no intent to assess them presently. There is a very specific procedure if the goal is to collect special assessments from town properties now. So, if you had a situation where we were billing the town for improved, or town properties for that improvements that are made, there's a very specific process. The property owners there raised some concerns. This, this is just clarifying that those are not assessments that are being levied now. And so, this is making that unequivocally clear as you approved with the other resolution. We are moving forward with the other special assessments on the city properties. This is just clarifying the situation with the town properties.
I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you, Alderman Allen and Alderman Zingshaim. Any questions for Ian? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Our last item tonight is a resolution creating tax increment district number 17, approving its project plan, and establishing its boundaries within the City of West Bend. Phil, thanks for being here tonight.
Good evening. Phil Costin with Ellers. I'm going to walk through the project plan rather succinctly, hopefully. And again, as always, ask any questions you have along the way. We can get those answered for you. But I'll, I think you have a copy of the project plan in front of you. Is that correct, in your packet?
We have the resolution to approve the project plan.
Okay. Is there a process you would like to walk through the plan?
If, if people want to find the plan, you can pull up the minutes from the meeting of the Joint Review Board. And it's in that packet. Sorry.
So, if you, if you're tracking, if you want to click on agendas through the system and go to project plan by the Joint Review Board, what, you, or Matt is...
And that would be the December 3rd.
Okay.
Agenda packet.
Yes. Yeah, it would be both the December 3rd Joint Review Board and also maybe in the Plan Commission.
Oh, it should be.
That evening as well.
Yeah.
As a public hearing on it.
Project plan.
All meeting groups, just that little arrow.
December 3rd?
Mm-hmm.
Review board, the J. Come on, baby. Down a little bit yet.
I saw it.
If you, if you might. There it is, on the bottom.
Yeah, I've seen this before.
And then just scroll.
How do I?
Okay. Thank you, Jeff. Didn't mean to slow down the meeting, but I wanted to make sure everybody had the information in front of them in case there are questions that came up. Is everybody comfortable moving forward?
Mm-hmm.
All right. Well, we're talking about tax increment district number 17 tonight. As a reminder, there's three approvals needed to create a tax increment district on December 3rd. A initial meeting of the Joint Review Board, which are all the other taxing bodies that are at play here as well. So, we have a representative of the school district, the county technical college, the city, and a citizen member at large. They had an organizational meeting on the 3rd. I think we had good feedback from all the Joint Review Board members in support of this tax increment district. That evening, there was a public hearing held by Plan Commission. And I understand there were a number of residents, town primarily town residents, that came forward with some questions as to the development. Those hopefully were answered, for the most part, that evening. And they did approve it and it moves it forward to the council meeting tonight. If you approve it tonight, it goes back to that Joint Review Board on January 21st for final action. So, you're the second approval of the needed three approvals for this to move forward. In the executive summary, just on page three, you'll see that we have some of the key information kind of in a written form in the executive summary. So, it's 104.77 acre site. If there is a little bit of wetland, we need to identify 1.79 acres of wetland. This is going to be a mixed-use tax increment district, meaning it can stay open for up to 20 years or until you have collected enough increment to pay off all the obligations. And at that point, you're required to close out the district. We've identified estimated project costs up to 17.8 million. We'll touch on those in a little bit. And potential value increase of about $70 million, $69.1 million. And we do expect at this point that it'll take the full life of the district to pay everything back. Because it's a mixed-use district and that, and we have a substantial amount of housing development, and we'll touch on that again in a little bit, we have a number of requirements as it pertains to the statutes. And so, if you create a mixed-use district, then you have what's called newly-platted residential. So, new development, new residential development. You can't have more than 35% of the total acreage of the tax increment district be for newly-platted. So, 35% and under. We've worked very closely with city staff and the developer to make sure that we met that criteria. We're just under that 35%. Within that 35%, we also need to make sure that we have a density of at least three units per acre or greater. So, the idea isn't when you create a district that you're going to do like one-acre lots. It's a little more urban density type developments that we're looking at. And here, we meet that threshold again of at least three, excuse me, three units per acre or greater. So, those are some of the criteria that have to be met as you create a mixed-use tax increment district. On page seven of the project plan, we have a district boundary map that shows the location. Now, this is an area that was identified as tax increment district number eight a number of years back. Today, it was closed out due to lack of, lack of activity. And it was also closed up because at that point, when today it was put in place, it was really going to be industrial development. It was an industrial district for this area. So, what was going to occur in this area was really going to be industrial development. And that was the only use that was allowed at that point in time. We have 16 parcels that have been identified. And again, a portion of this will be newly-platted residential. And a portion of this will stay kind of that commercial light industrial that kind of comes back from tid number four off of Paradise. So, there's going to have a combination of those two land uses as part of it. If you go to page number 10, there is one other item that I wanted to bring forward. And we need to identify, I'm sorry, just the next page. We're off on a page number, yeah. If you look at this map, you'll see that we have identified that four of the parcels are currently in tax increment district number four. And so, we need to identify those. You can see there are parcels 12, 14, 15, and 16. It's not a problem to overlay an existing tax increment district. What it does is it freezes the value for the old district. And any development that occurs is actually attributed back to the new district. And so, it's not, not going to harm necessarily tid number four. Tid four is actually in a very good financial position. But it's going to free up some additional acreage for this new district and potentially new increment that can be collected for a longer period of time, up to 20 years. So, we have identified those four parcels as a requirement to be identified within a map. If you go to section five, we have identified the parcels that have been identified to be included within those 16 parcels within this tax increment district. The next page, you'll see that we have to identify that there's enough value under the 12% test that you have the ability to create a new district. And so, if you look at the numbers that are on this chart, you can see that the city's total tid in value is about $4.4 billion. So, 12% of that is about $529 million. And to create a new district or to amend the boundaries of an existing district, you have to be under that 12% threshold. Your current increment value is 463 million. That is, when you add up the new growth that has occurred in all of your existing districts, you're at about 463 million. So, we're under that $529 million, but we're at about 10.56, 10.56% of that 12% test. So, what it tells you is that we have capacity to create this district and capacity for potential future districts. But we're bumping up close to that 12% threshold. So, to get back under the 12, if you ever get to the point where you're over the 12%, it just requires you to close out districts prior to be able to create new districts. But it's another requirement that we have to identify in the project plan, your ability to create a new district under that 12% test. If you go to, I'm trying to follow the right pages here, page 18 of the project plan. I'm sorry, go back to 17. One second here. Go down one more page. And one more, I'm sorry. You can keep going down one more page, Jess. Thank you. There we go. The other, another requirement as we go through the tax increment district creation is we need to identify if there are project costs being identified in the project plan that are outside the boundaries of the tax increment district. So, in this case, you know, we have south 18th Avenue roadway improvements that are going to take place from the Paradise heading south to support this new development. So, a portion of that Paradise to the northern tip of this tax increment district is outside the boundaries, but within a half mile. So, if there's a half-mile improvement, we need to identify that in the project plan. You can see the improvement identified is about 1.7 million. That would be outside the existing boundaries of the tax increment district. Doesn't mean it can't be paid for by the tip. We just need to identify it's a project outside the boundaries of the district and identified as a separate item. So, if we go to the section eight, we have identified a variety of project costs. There are two different, what I'll call municipal revenue obligations, which are pays you go upon. So, essentially, you have structured this in a way that you're going to mitigate most of the risks to the city. Now, the first agreement is what's called continental drive and corporate center development incentive. That'll, a portion of the increment will go back to pay that project cost. That'll go back to continental properties to pay for that project cost. And that identifies, that identified amount is 1,211,000. So, they, as increment is generated in the tax increment district, a portion will go back to pay back that first MRO for that project. The second MRO that you'll see in here says 5 million, and that's still being negotiated. But that's in agreement with Newman Development to pay for the internal roads for the subdivision that they are going to be building. And so, they'll receive up to $5 million. But again, they have to generate that in increment. So, they get a portion of the increment back to them after they pay taxes. And that gets, that gets allocated to that $5 million MRO. In both cases, the city doesn't have to go out and borrow any money. And that's, that's the real benefit of doing these MROs. You have an agreement with them that's contractual, that says you generate increment and a portion of it goes back to pay back those incentives, and the city doesn't have to borrow the money. So, it really secures the city from the standpoint of, of underperformance potentially. If they don't develop as quickly as they expected, you're not, they're not owed that dollar amount. They're, so, they generate what they get over, over the period of time, up to that 20-year period. In addition to that, we've identified the south 18th Avenue roadway, roadway and water main In addition to that, we've identified the South Eighteenth Avenue roadway, roadway and water main improvements at about six point six billion dollars. So it'll take a little bit of time to generate enough increment to be able to make that improvement. Now, I don't think there's a defined time of when that improvement will actually occur. We've identified it out in like twenty-seven, twenty-eight. If development happens quick, we could push that earlier. But we'll look at the cash flow of the tax increment district before that improvement is made. Those are funds, unlike the other two improvements, that will have to be borrowed by the city to put in that improvement. So we want to make sure there's sufficient increment to be able to pay that back. So those are the project costs along with some interest costs that have been identified on the long-term borrowing for the South Eighteenth Avenue roadway project, some financing costs, and then some ongoing administrative costs as well. There are really three different areas for developments. If you go to table one, the next page down, you can see we have identified the three different areas for development. The first is the ninety-five unit residential development that's being proposed by Newman. We've worked with them on putting together the numbers. You can see they're looking at an estimated four hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars per home. They think that's very conservative. They would expect the number to be a little bit higher. They've also identified a build-out through twenty-thirty for those ninety-five units. Again, they think that's relatively conservative as well. But ninety-five units at a minimum of four hundred and twenty-five thousand generates about forty million dollars of increment in this area. In addition to that, there is going to be, again, some areas for kind of that mixed commercial-industrial. That would be to the north of the subdivision. We've identified a three hundred and fifty thousand dollar per acre value. Again, very conservative. If you look at what's happened throughout the city and other industrial, commercial areas, it's been substantially greater than that. Quite frankly, you could have one development that comes in, takes up the majority of this, and meets that threshold very easily. So we've identified very conservatively, conservatively, again, about seventeen point five million dollars in value. On the east side of the Newman subdivision, there is additional acreage that is available for another potential subdivision that's closer to I forty-five. And you can see that we've identified that that will come after Newman develops over time. And about twenty-five additional units that can be built out in that area. And again, we use four hundred and fifty thousand dollar per unit basis. So that's how we got to that sixty-nine million dollars of development that really takes place over the next about eight or so years for this area to fully build out. And the next page, page two, we really identify the, the cash flow, what, what revenue will be generated as a result of this development. And there's a couple of key assumptions on the next page. Jess, thank you. A couple of key assumptions in here that I want to point out. One, a lot of this is residential. The majority of the value here is residential. We're using a two percent property appreciation value. So we're showing that value of the property increasing by two percent a year. We're also reflecting what we're seeing throughout the state, and that's a drop in the overall tax rate. And we think it's going to stabilize and level out at some point, hopefully soon. But you've dropped all the way down to fourteen dollars and eighty-five cents per thousand. Back not too long ago, you were over twenty dollars a thousand. So it's been a substantial drop. We continue to show a slight drop in that each year. A lot of things can change tax rates. The big one typically ends up being if there's a school referendum and/or a referendum that occurs at the city level. Those are the kind of things that can really change that tax rate number. So we do show a slight drop in the tax rate as well. We have built out a cash flow, two pages later on table number four. Next page, please. And in that cash flow, we've made the assumption that the full amount of the development will occur, that the road project will occur back in, out in twenty-twenty-seven. The MROs will be fully paid back to Newman and to Continental Properties. And if you go all the way to the right-hand side of this, you'll see it takes pretty much the full life of the district to have this all paid off. And the main reason for that is really South Eighteenth. That's a big-ticket item. It's a big cost that'll be bore primarily by the TIF district. So it'll take a little bit of time for that to pay back over the life of the district. The last couple of items we have to identify in the project plan. Section ten, we're not annexing any property. This is all property that's located within the city boundaries. We have identified that we don't expect any of this to be retail. Could there be a component of a business that might have a little retail enterprise? Maybe, but unlikely. You can have retail in this area. We just identified you weren't likely going to. We understand there'll probably be some needed changes to zoning in your master plan as part of this tax increment district, and that can occur once the district is in place. We're not looking to relocate any business or individual as part of this tax increment district. And we have identified on section fifteen, non-project costs that are related to South Eighteenth Avenue roadway improvements. So we've identified a small portion of that project would not be TID-eligible. Just because it's going to serve an area much greater than the tax increment district, it'll serve and benefit West Bend Mutual and a few others out in that area. So a portion of this will have to come from other sources besides TIF. Probably will pay for the full road improvement. So out of the six point nine million project costs, we're looking at about five hundred and sixty-six thousand. That may be the responsibility of the city as opposed to all of it being paid by the tax increment district. So that, and then finally, of course, I didn't want to leave out, we do have the city attorney's letter opinion. They're required to go through and take a look at the project plan and make sure all the statutory requirements that are due within a project plan are met. And Attorney Pruitt has provided us that letter opinion on page, second-to-last page of the tax increment district. So that's a relatively quick summary. Again, if it's approved tonight, it still goes back to the Joint Review Board for final approval, and that date is January twenty-first.
Thank you, Phil. I've got some concerns tonight on putting this to a vote because this presentation was not posted in our packet. And I would assume there's some council members who are seeing it for the first time. So we have a meeting on January twentieth, and the Joint Review Board is scheduled on the twenty-first. If we have a discussion tonight but take a vote on it on the twentieth, are we still able to bring it to Joint Review on the twenty-first?
No, we have to do a, well, there is a notice requirement, a class-one notice requirement. I think as long as it gets noticed in time, we could probably do it. Let me, I, I want to confirm that, Mayor, and get back to you tomorrow, but I believe we can still do that. Because it's really the, the date that we have to trigger, that triggers kind of that final JRB meeting, and the notice is really after the public hearing occurred. So I think that could work, but let me confirm that and get back to you tomorrow.
And, and the other scenario is could we push the twenty-first Joint Review Board meeting out X number of days in order to make sure we get the class notice?
Yeah, that would be the alternative. We can move that a week or two later if need be.
Okay. Any questions for Phil tonight? Any discussion? If not, again, my recommendation is that we don't take action on this tonight. And Phil, I appreciate you being here tonight. I don't know that you need to be here on the twentieth. Now's our time to ask Phil questions, but you don't need to be here on the twentieth. I'd like to put this on for action on January twentieth.
Can I ask one quick question or make one comment? What I've been hearing is the density issue. People are worried about so many housing units in one space. Is there any way there can be a little green space? Somewhere in the middle, somewhere a little park? Can something like that be built in, or is it too early to talk about that?
That would be handled through your normal review process of a subdivision that's coming through. That would not need to be dictated within a project plan. This is going for the financing tool.
Sure.
For, but as, as the, as the development is brought forward, that could certainly be a recommendation that comes.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Hearing none, thank you, Phil.
Thank you.
We'll move on to our reports tonight. I was told by Alderman Seizer that there was not a Parks and Rec Commission meeting on the eighteenth, correct? So we're not going to. So we're not going to do that report tonight. The eighteenth of twenty-twenty-five hasn't happened yet, so, so we won't do that report tonight. Create a report. Anything tonight, Jay?
Sure. I'll just share with the council, they already are, you're already aware of the situation that we had with our prescription insurance company. We are in the process of switching for our employees for the new year, and our new company did not add the employees into the system. And that created a problem when employees went to start to fill their scripts on, in the new year and came aware, we became aware of it through our, our broker, USI, on Friday. And then HR and Jess and myself throughout the weekend worked with Prime Therapeutics, our new, our new prescription drug company to make it right as best as possible for the employees. Just, just sharing it with you all. You all know employees personally and have interactions with them. It's not something we take lightly. It wasn't something that Prime took lightly. Once they discovered the error and, or were pointed out the error that they made, they've been working throughout the weekend. We did cover employees' script costs with, from the city standpoint so that they didn't have to pay out of pocket as the, as the scripts were filled. And then employees might or might not have been able to cover them on their own. So the, the decision was made to have the city cover them on a temporary basis. Those are, those charge, those few charges that occurred over employee, over the weekend were, were taken care of by the city and now are being rerun through the credit card system and countered back. And the process through the normal insurance channels now that Prime is up and, up and running. But I just wanted to share that with the council that it wasn't, wasn't great. USI feels bad about it, who is our insurance broker. And obviously, we do too. We apologize to any employee who had a, a negative interaction with our new prescription insurance carrier, but one that we're committed to making whole. The bugs aren't still all worked out of them, but they're, they're getting really, really close. We have digital cards to employees now, and they'll be getting their, their insurance card in the mail in, in the near future. And again, just a sincere apology to all employees who had to deal with that situation over the weekend and early in the new year. Thanks.
Thanks, G. Any Alderman reports tonight?
Nothing at District One.
Alderman Allen?
I just wanted to mention that I filed a notice of non-candidacy and will be leaving the council mid-April.
Thanks for that, Alderman Allen. Anyone else? Alderman Sparts?
Plan Commission meeting tomorrow night.
Plan Commission meeting tomorrow night. The only thing I have is, as you all know, Fireman Kenny retired, and his last day was on Friday. And he had twenty-nine years of service here in West Bend. I think it was thirty-six or thirty-seven years total in his career. And he, he is still going to be around and helping with the transition of whoever backfills him, doing that pro bono. And so that's just the kind of guy he is. And he will, he will be missed, but I know we'll still see him around our community. And just want to say thanks to him for his long service and always a positive attitude, serving our fire department. Anything else? If not, we have an item appropriate for closed session tonight, so I will entertain a motion to adjourn to closed session pursuant to Wisconsin State Statute nineteen point eight-five-one C, considering employment promotion, compensation, or performance evaluation data of any public employee over which the governmental body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility, namely a personnel matter. So moved.
Second.
Thank you, Alderman Sternig and Alderman Allen. I will call the roll. Alderman Schmidt?
Aye.
Alderman Seizer? Alderwoman Seizer, sorry. Alderman Butchlick?
Aye.
Alderman Allen?
Aye.
Alderman Zingshaim?
Aye.
Alderman Sparts?
Aye.
Alderman Urquist?
Aye.
And Alderman Sternig?
Aye.
All right, we are adjourned into closed session. We will not reconvene tonight, so we will adjourn our common council meeting from closed session.